Good? Okay. All right. We are ready to go. I call the February 11th, 2019 School Board Meeting to order. It is 7:08 PM. We are in Conference Room C of the Fisher Administration Building at 12121 West North Avenue. We will begin with a moment of silent reflection. Ms. Newman, please call the roll.
Mr. Doman.
Here.
Ms. Fraley.
Here.
Dr. Jessup Banger.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Ms. Mufel.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Excused.
Mr. Rollins.
And here. All right, we'll move on to... Oh, yeah, student school board members.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sam.
Here.
And Emma.
Here.
Gifford.
Thank you very much. All right. I will move on to public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to recognitions. So, thanks to some of these folks who are joining us this evening. The School Board loves to recognize staff and students for exemplary achievements and accomplishments at school or in the community. We've got a number of folks who we're hoping to honor this evening. First off, we'll start off with our students. So, students Chris Ashley, Javion Graham, and Manny Spence have been invited to Concordia University. Yeah, come on up. Do you want to just grab some chairs here for a second?
Miss May, Chris here.
Awesome, awesome, welcome. They have been invited to Concordia University for a luncheon to celebrate their participation in the African-American Male Initiative. They were chosen to be part of the Leaders in Training Program. Only a few students are offered this unique opportunity. So, congratulations. Mr. Garrison, will you explain a little bit about what this program's all about?
Sure, I will. So, over the course of, actually, for, we've been a part of this Closing Achievement Gap Consortium for the past five years. Our Board member here, actually, Dr. Phil Erdl, is one of the founders of the Closing Achievement, Closing the Achievement Gap Consortium. And this was one of the programs that is a part of it. The AAMI, the African-American Male Initiative, is a four-year program, or a three-year program, with the fourth year being the Leaders in Training Program. With that being said, we, of course, have grown our program to over 150 boys being a part of the program, of course, over 35 different school districts being a part of that. And Wauwatosa is one of the largest groups in the Closing Achievement Gap Consortium. We have over 40 or so males that are part of the program, but the fourth year again is about the Leaders in Training Program. With that being said, of course, we couldn't bring back everybody to be a part of that program, but some of our students were chosen to be a part of it. And three of our gentlemen tonight that's beginning recognition for that is here. Christopher Ashley is one, Emmanuel Spence is the third, and Javion Graham. I would like to make sure my parents wanted me to tell you all that some things came up and they couldn't get here right at the moment. Actually, we have some en route still, but they are so appreciative to the recognition that the Board has bestowed on some of our students. But enough about me or the program. Chris, will I say some things too?
Well, mainly, my colleagues that did the program with me, I'm pretty sure, since they're not here, they kind of would want me to say things too, especially for them. But basically, the program throughout the four years that I've, you know, been doing it with not only Mr. Garrison, but pretty much the, pretty much like every school district that we've done it so far with. We, or me personally, from like reflecting on the four years that I've been there, me personally, I didn't actually believe that I would like the program that much, but, but I said, hey, I will give it a shot. So, the first year was kind of tricky, especially with... How many boys did we have the first?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. So, it was kind of interesting, but then after that, we kept doing it more and more, and then we grew up to how many?
Hundred-and-fifty-four.
Hundred-and-fifty-four. So, kind of, also being at Concordia, it kind of gave us kind of like what college would be like, especially with like this strict regimen. What time did we wake up? We woke up at seven, and then we had breakfast, and then we would go on our first kind of like class meeting, and then we would go on the field trip, and then come back for lunch. So, it was kind of, it was kind of interesting. But I feel like it was actually really meaningful and powerful, basically because they gave us the outlet for African-Americans, especially males, to kind of have a way to express ourselves and have kind of like a mentor, basically, helping us guide us through our high school experience.
Cool. Four questions, comments?
I would just say I'm happy you gave it a shot. Just thrilled that we're all, you're doing this, and that really it's the work of the students that you're all putting in. So, really, this is, this is really for you and about you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you very much. And we'll do, we'll just do the, at the end. Yeah. We'll move on to the staff recognition. Two Wauwatosa School District teachers achieved National Board Certification for Professional Teaching Standards at the end of 2018. Michael Hayden, orchestra teacher at Wauwatosa East High School, received his certification in music/early adolescence through young adulthood. And Michael Wallow, math teacher at East High School, earned his certification in math/adolescence and young adulthood. So, Mr. Hayden, I believe, is here tonight. Welcome. Congratulations. Come on. Come on. Can I get a photo?
Can I say something first?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'm gonna speak. So, for those of you who don't know, National Board Certification is a huge amount of additional work for a teacher to go through. Less than 5% of teachers nationally receive this honor, and the amount of work, you know, taking videos of yourself, sending them off for people to review them, tons and tons of feedback. It is such an honor to have two teachers that went through it again recently. I'd love to know how many of our teachers within the district have it. But when I saw this email, I was just so excited and so proud. And given that all three of my kids have had the honor of working with Mr. Hayden, it was just a really exciting thing to see. So, thank you for all that extra hard work despite your rigorous class schedule and two little ones at home. And Mr. Wallow, my son just can't figure out how to get you in his schedule. So, thank you for all the hard work.
All right. And then our last recognition. I will introduce Principal Hoist. I think it's areas. We'll talk a little bit about the gallery walk and the county programs.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dean Hoist, one of the co-administrators of the county programs. And in probably about two minutes, you're gonna have a whole batch of community partners and school staff members leaving this room. It's been a long day. We've had a gallery walk. We, you know, we, we have programs that are in some pretty unique places and spaces where you just can't walk through the door and get a sense of the school. So, about three years ago, we started the practice of coming here and doing a gallery walk, so people can come here and see the work we do, the great work we do. And I'm just, I'm just so proud of staff. There's been so many great comments from people who have left today, just saying that they had credible conversations about people who really, really care for kids, and that was great to hear. We have a lot of our partners who are still here and in the audience, so I just have to, I just have to read off some names. Running Rebels Community Organization. We have mentors and advocates in attendance, including Stacy Lindsay and Tara Martin. Milwaukee Public Library comes weekly. They've been doing this for like a year, so I have Lizzie and Kelly and Kat working with our girls group. We got this Milwaukee, the Garden of Hope, Mr. Andre Lee Ellis, still doing work with Andre. Just tremendous community resource, great story in the paper a couple of weeks back about him. Wisconsin Regional Training Partnership and Big Step, Kyle Ashley and Johnny Anderson are here. Vocational skills and, and just work and career, work that we do with them. Express Yourself Milwaukee, Touyet and Hallie are here. Zip MKE Dominic Inoue is here, who's also working with our MCAP group. Rise Youth and Family Services, right on North Avenue in Wauwatosa, come in weekly to work with our youth. DeShawn Ewing from the Parenting Network is here. Medical College of Wisconsin Librarians. Ellen and Liz are here. MKE Coffee, Making Coffee, Chad Johnson was here, set up. He has our County Grounds Roast that we have. The Visilar Group, Phil Singleton, district parent as well. Jakari Carr from Jakari's Kicks for Kids. Sevion Grinnell, Tulsa grad, who comes and works with our civics team. We have Rhonda and Neil Davis who have done some work for us. We have teachers who come in and do evening book reads, including Ashley Mu, who's one of our summer school teachers. Shawna Perry Finch, who's doing some work with us with community circles. It's a lot of names. It's not even exhaustive of the people who came and went, but just really appreciate the partnership. They help us be our best selves with our students. And I don't know, I guess I'm gonna call for a round of applause because, for the partners and our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know I gotta say something. I feel like this is what we mean when we say it takes a village. Like, it takes people from all different backgrounds, all different, you know, places of work, all different... I just, I, I love the work that you all are doing. I had the pleasure of visiting Bell Phillips last year and saw incredible teaching. Ms. Robinson, you know who you are. I was excited to see Ms. Kirchman's going over there this year. Loved seeing the article in the paper the other day, The Independent. It just makes me so proud that when we say as a district that we will educate every child, we truly mean that. But it also means that you all need to let us know what you need, because we have incredible programming happening. I was talking to a colleague in Milwaukee the other day. They were raving about Dean, and they said, "He just keeps showing up and giving us great ideas and tells us what, what he's doing and what you all are doing." So, thank you for continuing to give all of yourself. It, it makes it an honor to be sitting up here for you. So, let us know what you need.
Ms. Beetham?
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm just very excited about the whole recognition section, and I did poke my head into the gallery walk, and that was really great. Thank you for being here. And so, we saw, you know, students are stretching themselves with the AAMI. We have staff stretching themselves, doing some things for National Board Certification, of course, the partnerships that we have. I mean, these are extraordinary things that we're doing, and you are making a huge difference supporting the kids and families in Wauwatosa. So, you know, my heartfelt thanks to you for doing that extra. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, guys.
It's a small army. All right. Mid-sized arms. Mr. Garrison? Mr. Garrison? Mr. Garrison?
Would you like to introduce? Yeah, come on up.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, guys.
Javion is here. Thank you so much for allowing us to come back up. Javion came in and said, "You made me run out this house. I'm coming up to this table." And so, I would be remiss if I didn't introduce everyone in the room to Javion Graham. He can, he can share a little bit about his experience over the four years. Actually, we actually started, we selected the group when they're fifth, I'm sorry, in the eighth grade. So, it's actually been five years since I've been working with Javion and a lot of the boys here in the Wauwatosa School District.
Hello.
Well, I'm Javion Graham. AAMI for me was, it was amazing. I got to meet so many, I want to say successful black men, that like just painted a picture of to be something different, 'cause where I'm coming from, a lot of, a lot of role models are like rappers or gang members, people that, that they portray a lot as to be neighborhood heroes from where I'm from. So, it's, it was great to meet people who weren't on that like spectrum, people who were, you know, that actually showed that they cared for me and stuff like that. And then just growing up all, all four years in the summer, just having a specific time to get a bunch of black men in the room together without any violence, without any negativity, and just, it just, it was beautiful for me. I just, I loved it so much. And then, Mr. Garrison, it was, he is a great mentor to be around. He just, he helped me, he's helping me right now. I'm not gonna say he helped me, 'cause I'm not finished. He, he been helping me a lot to just be more of a better person, be more of a mentor, 'cause I wanna do a lot like what he does. I wanna know, get a bunch of people together, make sure, know they're good, make sure they're on time, make sure they, they're working on their own management skills, make sure they're, they're talking to their peers, networking with others, to make sure they can build bonds and friendships and all that, to keep everybody unified. And I just thank him a lot for even allowing me to still be, allowing me to be in AAMI, allowing me to do that fourth year, to be in the Lit program, which helped me talk to a lot of younger kids and get like, help build mindsets to be better people as well. So, I loved AAMI, and I wish I could do it again, but I gotta find a new home besides Concordia. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
I'm gonna ask. So, Christopher, I would like you to share, if possible, your experience, and then, and then also just say, maybe help me understand, what was your, what was your most influential conversation that you had with the business people? And then you too. Yeah. I just, I just really would like to hear your, about your experience.
Oh, okay. Well, basically, my experience with AAMI, like I said, I didn't really like, think that I would like it as much, but I kind of went on a limb and said, hey, why not? I think it deserves a try, because it sounds like a pretty interesting program. And then I was actually pretty glad that I took that, you know, step forward and actually joined and tried to actually, you know, get in-depth with it. And then I kind of learned that I loved it more and more. And then also with Mr. Garrison, he kind of pushed me more and more to be a better person, like Javion said, and also to work on not only myself, but also my community. What could I bring to the community? What's, what can I bring to the school and, or the district, and what else could I bring to other African-American males or African-Americans at all that are my age and have kind of like the role models that Javion said, especially with how they kind of paint specific people and violence, basically, as kind of, kind of what we're not aiming for, but kind of like the, kind of like role models, basically. So, it was kind of nice to see that, hey, not everybody's kind of have the same mindset that actually there are a lot of people, especially African-Americans or other minorities, that actually want to do a lot of good and meaningful things, especially not just for themselves, but for their community as well. And also, with AAMI, I had like a couple incidents, just a couple, but it kind of was, well, one time I kind of lost my luggage, and they kind of shut the whole program down to find it. And I just got the wrong room when I went back there. So, I had my luggage the whole time. But the fact that basically we shut the whole program down just to find luggage when it was not really missing, and nobody really judged me for it afterwards, is kind of nice and inviting, if that makes any, if that makes any sense. But I really loved the program, and I wish, like he said, that I can come back another year, or probably even come back and try to, you know, lead the other newcomers of the group.
You guys can become counselors.
That'd be great. That'd be awesome. And a moment for me that really mattered, that like just stood out more than a lot, was my, actually, my last year, when I was part of the Lit program, the Leaders in Training. We had a speaker come in. We usually have him come in every year. You know, he gives, he gives like this little motivational speech, and like, I hear it like, this is my fourth time hearing this, so I know, I was used to it. But this time, he, he, he had, he had made us like, say, say one thing that we were appreciative of, or like one thing that we were, we're here for, like, why are we here? Like, what's the reason are you here? And like, it made me cry, 'cause, 'cause my reason is small, but at the same time, it's so big to me, 'cause I wanted, 'cause I'm gonna be the first black male in my family to graduate high school from my dads, my uncle, my brother, my cousins, all of them. I'm gonna be the first black male to graduate high school. Not even just that, even, I'm graduating high school, and then I'm gonna be the first black male in my family to go to college, and that's just even more beautiful, me to just speak on, because just, just here and there, and just then I just have all these people motivating me, wanting me to succeed, it's just even greater. And then I just, I just...
You're enthusiastic.
You're gonna make us cry.
Yes. Contagious. It really is.
I don't know very mu, I apologize, but I don't know very much about your Lit program. Is there something you can recommend to us from your Lit program that, that, that we could look at ourselves? I'm always looking for things to...
So, Leaders in Training Program, since our program grew so fast, we originally had the program, sorry, Javion had me choked up here, so, you know, you learn so much about our kids, even in moments like this, all right? I knew Javion's background, I'm sure, I'm, I knew Javion's background.
When you say Lit, you mean literature, right?
No, it's Leaders in Training.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was a reading.
Correct. We just called it.
You have, yeah, I got confused with, with the curriculum things we're doing. All right, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Did you want me to explain, or?
You keep going. You're doing well. I just didn't want, yeah.
No, like I said, here is just some of Javion's, you know, story again, although I know a lot about Javion, just hearing it is, is a special thing. We don't know the impact that we have on anyone that we're around. You know, Maya Angelou is gifted and saying, you know, people will remember how you make them feel. And I can say this about, you know, Javion and Chris and Emmanuel and a lot of students that are in our school district, they're, they're doing great work. They're doing a lot of great things, and sometimes we just don't get to hear it. The Leaders in Training Program in general is really about making sure that our boys understand that there's a spectrum that we want them to, to tackle, from the gifted and talented to the historically marginalized. We want them to really reach out to all of that spectrum within their own community. And however they can actually do that, we want to support them in doing so. And so, the Leaders in Training Program really supports looking at, again, from the historically marginalized to the gifted and talented, and really figuring out what, what can we do to reach that entire spectrum, not heavily on one side or too, too strong on the other. What can we do to reach that entire spectrum, and that our boys are part of that leadership conversation? And so, the Leaders in Training Program is again, new for the first year this year, but it's gonna continue each year and subsequent years.
Any other questions, comments?
Just thank you, Javion. And Christopher, thank you.
You wanna quick them up, grab a photo real quick? Sting, we got?
Yeah.
Come on up, guys.
Yo, yo, yo. Come on.
Let's quick snap, bro.
Come on up. Swish, swish, swish. They take so much, always. Thank you so much. Come on up. You guys want that?
One side.
Thank you. All right. Javion, stop.
One more.
Thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations. On to the next report. We will hear from student school board member Ms. Gifford, who will introduce some of our members of the forensics team from East High School. Hello, Ms. Gifford.
So, I have three of my teammates here with me. Come on up as well.
If there's, is there enough chairs to have everybody up? Okay, great.
So, we have a presentation.
Do you want to just draw the microphone? I'm gonna take off.
We have a presentation. It's on the agenda as well. I don't know how to get it queued up on here, though. If I can, can I log in to my computer or to my Gmail?
Can I send it?
Yes. Oh, here it is. Okay. So, I'm really gonna hand it over to my team members here to introduce themselves here. So...
All right. So, I'm Courtney. I'm a senior, and this is my fourth year in forensics. So, just a little bit about like what I do. So, I'm in the categories impromptu and special occasion speaking. So, impromptu, what you do is you get five minutes to give and prepare a speech on a topic you just get when you walk in the room. And then special occasion speaking is a prepared speech. And like in the beginning of the year, you get like one of three topics. So, like this year, I'm doing a school candidacy speech.
My name's Brenna, and I'm a junior. This is my third year on the team. I compete in two categories. I compete in the category of moments in history, which is when we're provided a time period, and we have to create an informative piece on an event during that time period. So, this year, we were assigned the time periods of the 1950s or the 1400s. So, you choose one, and then choose an event. And then I also compete in the category of oratory, which is your standard persuasive piece, 10 minutes, just present as much as you can to prove a point.
My name is Matthew. I'm a senior. I've been doing forensics for three years, and my category is radio announcing. So, basically, what that is, is I get a packet of news, which is about 20 to 30 minutes in length, and I have a half hour from then, from when I get the packet, to put, to cut it down, and put together a five-minute radio broadcast, which will include local, national, international, sports weather, and an advertisement. And yeah, that's what I do.
So, I'm Emma, and I've been in forensics for four years. And my category is furago, and in that category, we have several prose pieces and some poetry, and it's all mixed together and follows a central theme. And so, my central theme is around society's expectations for women. Okay, so, I'll just do like a quick thing, and they can add on this. So, I'll just, I just wanna quick talk about like why I joined, or I guess why I stayed in it, 'cause Emma kind of forced me to join at the beginning of the year. But I stayed in it because I've never been in a club where there are so many different types of people. You know, there are, there are people in sports, there are people in chess club, there are people in art and theater and all this, kind of mixed into this weird kind of big group that goes and wakes up at 7:00 AM every Saturday morning to go do these competitions. And I stayed in it because everyone is so supportive of one another, and it's just a really non-judgmental, very like, I wouldn't say relaxing, but very kind of fun environment that's unlike any other club I've ever done.
Yeah. I think it's definitely something, when you can form friendships with people that you barely even know their names, but it's completely based off the fact that you feel completely uncomfortable talking in front of a group of people that you don't know. And I think it's those types of friendships that really last. Like, I talked to people that I met through forensics my freshman year still. And I think together, whether we feel uncomfortable or if we do feel confident in what we're doing, we just overall, like, we become like a group, and it's really a comforting environment overall.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of fun. I've met a couple of very good friends through forensics, both of whom were seniors that year that I met them, and then they promptly left, so that was rather unfortunate. that was rather unfortunate, I haven't spoken to them. But yeah, it's a lot of fun. Um, you know, I joined, it, it, it took me a little while to find my category. I've only been doing radio for a couple of years, but I really just, I really love it. It's a lot of fun. You know, some people, it doesn't sound like, like it might be a lot of fun, but I really, really get into it, especially when I get to put on a different voice to do an advertisement. That's, I really love that.
Yeah, so the purpose of forensics is really just to help encourage, um, students to be better and more comfortable with their public speaking skills. And I'm gonna add on to what, uh, my teammates have been saying about meeting new people, cause you're not just meeting new people, um, from East and on the team, but you're also meeting other students from other schools in the area and like really forming like relationships with them, cause you see them every single Saturday bright and early. Um, and so you could really meet a lot of nice people.
Um, okay, so kind of like what I touched on is, we usually have to be on the bus at 6:45 AM. So like, I, not an early, I'm not a morning person, so for me to have to get up at like 5 o'clock or like 5:30 to like put on a dress and like go on a bus in the freezing cold winter and then spend a whole day at school when it's Saturday, isn't my ideal situation. But once you get there, it's so fun and you, so you have three rounds of practice, um, or it's not practice, but it's...
First round is never practice.
So you have three rounds where you do your speech and then, um, based on your rankings, so it's ranked from one to five, five being the worst. So based on your rankings, you, um, are eligible or not to go on to the power round. Um, and then the power round is for a select group of kids and then based on that, they go on stage and you're a finalist or you're in the top three.
Yeah, essentially power rounds are sort of kind of like your final round. So your first three rounds are your prelims and that's when you gain the points for not only your team, but yourself. And then it's usually either the top six to eight point earners, depending on the size of your category and how many people are there that week, um, make it to the power rounds. And that's when you're fighting for, not fighting, but you're speaking for, um, your first place, second place, as well as all your finalists.
So, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Um, so just this, uh, last Saturday, we went to, uh, West Bend and we had, we fortunately had 15 of our competitors' power, about, out of about 30, so about half of our team power. Um, so yeah, that was really cool. Um, it was, it was, it was really great because, you know, it's, you know, we worked, we worked for this all, all, like all year, like we start practicing in like late October, early November, and we're working for like two months before we even like start doing tournaments. So just to be able to do this and to be able to get this far and to be able to see the results of your hard practice is really, really, really gratifying.
Yeah, and one thing I wanna say about this is, so we've had three meets so far this season. And Marquette, we got a first place trophy. And West Bend, we just got a first place trophy. And we haven't gotten a trophy really in like four years. So we kind of really came at it this year. We've had so many students not only be finalists, but also get first place in their category and sometimes a category out of 30 students, you know? So the fact that we've already out of three tournaments gotten two first-place trophies as a team, and then not even counting how many students have gotten their individual medals and trophies, it's just, it's really awesome.
And even to add on to that, it's not the same people every single week. It's sort of cool to see, um, a lot of the freshmen are showing up this year and winning the medals and the, um, and the trophies. And it's really cool to see how things change week to week, because it's not like the same five people are placing. It's constantly changing and everyone's trying to do their best and you see constant improvement, which is very cool.
Yeah, so we wanna give a special thank you to our coaches, Mr. Balzarek and Ms. Bull. And so then this weekend, we have conference, um, at East. And so only 25 unfortunately of our team members out of 30 can participate. But it is kind of just a whole like, um, I don't know, like part half-season checkpoint and to see like where all the other schools are exactly in their rankings. And so hopefully we'll get another first place this weekend. We'll see, but it's all that East and so we're very, very excited for that. Yeah.
You guys have any questions?
I do. I love forensics. And, um, I just have a question for you. Who was terrified to be on stage when you first went?
Oh my God.
Everyone?
It was like so bad, because you're up there with like all these other really good people that you're like, they're so good. And then especially when you get like the first place trophy and you're like, wait, what happened to Courtney at the first meet? Yeah, like wait, where'd they go? Like, and then that realization's like, oh my God, like I'm up here all by myself, everyone's looking at me. And then we also do this kinda weird thing, it's called like a California clap. So like everyone only gets one clap if they're like a finalist. And then first place is just so, everyone stands for you and claps for you. And it's just, the first time it's so scary, but then after that, you're just like, I wanna be on stage, you know? Like I wanna, even if I don't get first place, like it just, I wanna get a medal. So, I don't know. Now I'm kind of like, I wanna be there.
Well, the skills that you're learning are just, you know, I mean, they're just incredible.
Yeah.
For your next steps. So I have another question for you. Does Mr. Balzarek still talk about the student who missed the bus to go to state?
No.
No? Oh, you should ask him about that.
I think he's mentioned a couple times where he's had to leave some students behind, because, you know, if you're not on time, he'll call you and then he'll call your house and maybe you'll make a trip by your house, but at some point, we have to leave you, you know?
Well, I can attest, the, the bus doesn't come by your house.
Well, yeah.
Was it your house?
I'm a little bit hard of hearing in one ear from my daughter screaming at me while I was driving her to the state competition, because she in fact overslept for the bus. And it was a, quite a scene in our house at like 6:00 AM. So, I think he does tell the story periodically. He might even say her name, but don't, but I'm glad no one did that in your class.
Can, can folks come watch?
No.
So students can watch. And...
I think parents could watch power rounds.
It's kinda weird.
But parents usually don't come. I would say for state competition, it wouldn't be as unusual. Um, or maybe for conference?
I think the thing is like you can come, but usually, especially for power rounds, like a bunch of students will come in. Like I know for me, being an impromptu, a lot of kids, like the room is full and I'm like, I'm not used to this. But occasionally, there 'll be a parent there, but I think for the most part, parents don't come because it's a long day. You know, like you don't, there's really not much you would do if, when your student isn't performing or anything like that.
So really only like for power rounds?
It's a really long day.
That like you can kind of like hide in the back corner, so your kid won't be too afraid.
I ask in particular, cause I asked, I have a middle schooler who does forensics and she has assured me parents cannot come.
I'm a judge.
Maybe you should, yeah, maybe you should just try it.
Eric, I'm a judge for middle school forensics and parents are not allowed at forensics.
In high school, you probably could for powers. And if not, there's a mock tournament at the beginning of the season and parents are invited to that. So, yeah.
So you are allowed to go to that?
So, yeah.
You could also probably be a judge, like...
Yeah, you could be a judge.
But you can't judge your own child. I just wanted to say thank you too for helping out with the middle school students. Um, I know my son's coach is, or helper is a high school student and finds her help just really incredibly thoughtful. And he'll say, oh, Olivia told me to do that, Mom. And I'm like, oh yeah, don't listen to me, listen to Olivia. Um, so I can attest to the fact that I think it's a fabulous program. When we moved here, I thought it was like dissection. I didn't know that forensics was like public speaking.
Sometimes you have to say forensics.
I was very confused when the, the third child said he wanted to go into forensics and I was like, that's weird. Um, but no, super, super impressive. Um, I, judging, I am blown away by what, um, and I've only done middle schoolers, what, what they're able to, to get up and do. So, you know, kudos to all of you. You're gonna be so well-prepared when you get to college.
Thank you.
And for job interviews and for all that good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thanks, Emma.
Thank you very much. Any community comment on this report? Seeing none. We can move on to the consent agenda. Is there any, uh, are there any items on the consent agenda which board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Ms. Mufeld. Seconded by Mr. Meyer. Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Culver?
Mr. Doman?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Banger?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Mufeld?
Yes.
Mr. Phil, uh, Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Can't believe Ms. G is retiring. Um, but we'll move on to, uh, the buildings and grounds action item. Uh, Ms. Mufeld, would you like to read this one?
Uh, yes. It is recommended that the school board approve the schematic design as presented and I so move.
Moved by Ms. Mufeld?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Meyer.
May, may I offer a friendly amendment?
Yes, please.
As I indicated, that we add the words, uh, where it says schematic design, we add the words for Lincoln and Underwood Elementary Schools.
Moved by Mr. Meyer. As a friendly amendment, any objection to the friendly amendment?
With you as second.
Okay, so is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So move for approval by acclamation as a friendly amendment. Uh, any objection? Seeing none, we'll make that little word change. Right? Alright, so we are as amended. Uh, end of the discussion on the presentation. Um, let's see, Ms. Natchey. Come on up and give us a presentation.
I'll be discussing.
Okay, great.
Alright.
I'll just do an introduction really quick. So tonight, we have, um, Mr. Nick Kent from PRA, sorry, and Mr. Michael Sopchuk, um, I'm also from PRA. Uh, they are just gonna go through both design concepts for, um, Lincoln and Underwood and, uh, give you just a background as to the steps we've taken to get to this point. And then obviously the community feedback that we've received and then let you see the schematic design for the new buildings. So with that, I'll step back and let them take over.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, yeah, it's been a busy, many weeks since November. Uh, we've come tremendous, I think, tremendous, uh, distance from where we were all sitting back a few months ago. And it's pretty exciting, uh, to see these, these buildings, uh, come to fruition. And, uh, when we started this process, you know, we, we talked about engaging the community and bringing feedback in as part, as an integral part of our design process. And, um, I think I, I had a thought what that would look like and how that would work, but it has been remarkable, uh, how much the feedback has actually influenced, um, our designs. Uh, these designs have evolved for the better, uh, from the feedback that we've gotten from community members. And we'll talk a little bit here about what that looked like. But these buildings are better because of commentary that we have gotten and insight that we've gotten from community members, from, from staff members, um, even in some cases, some, some students, um, who have given us some input on these buildings. So, um, we'll take you through these and, and I, I just wanted to share that, that this has been an incredible process that we've gone through, uh, to let these buildings evolve, to this point in time. So, um, tonight, we're gonna talk about just where we are, um, in the process, what comes next. We're gonna go through the design of both of these buildings, uh, and then leave some time for us to discuss. So what have we been working on? Um, well, we've had meetings, uh, with our neighborhood groups, uh, and with the Historic Preservation Commission. So one of our questions from the outset was, were there going to be issues that Historic Preservation, uh, would want us to be looking at, particularly with, with Lincoln, but we wanted to, to talk about both of these buildings. Um, and I think we can report that Historic Preservation was very pleased, uh, with what we have presented to them and our approach to these buildings. So that was, that was an excellent, um, meeting. The neighborhood meetings, each one of these two schools, we hosted a series of three, uh, neighborhood engagement meetings at each one of the schools. And each one of those, um, sites went through three distinct steps. Our first meeting at each site was, um, I think kind of fun. We did a little scavenger hunt. We sent, uh, those who showed up, uh, around the buildings. We spent a lot of time talking about what was not so great about these buildings pre-referendum. So we really wanted to give the community an opportunity to tell us what is good about these buildings and what should we be thinking about and carrying forward in the designs of the new structures. The second meeting, uh, that we had was, we gave them an opportunity to engage in a little bit of what we do every day. We did a, a design charrette, uh, which is a little design exercise where we, we broke into, into teams. We gave them the site plan. We really focused on how would you organize, um, the limited amount of area that we have at each one of these sites, given the programmatic features that we have to accommodate, the size of the building, playgrounds, parking, drop-offs, all those things that make sites work. And we let them, um, give us some feedback on how they would like to see these sites organized. And the final one was a preliminary presentation of what these buildings look like. And it was really an opportunity for us to hear, hear back from them, uh, what their thoughts were, uh, on our preliminary design. So my guess is, uh, you all have probably seen a little bit, uh, of what those, what those presentations were. Um, but those comments that we got back did, uh, start to influence some of the modifications and evolution of how these buildings are coming together. So that brings us through schematic design. And I wanted to touch very quickly on what schematic design is. We've talked about those steps before, schematic design, design development, construction documents. And tonight, we're bringing to you schematic design. That is the first phase of design work, um, on these projects. So what schematic design is, is the, the general direction, the big picture design of these buildings. It defines the number of rooms, uh, that go into a building, the general organization of the building, and really the exterior aesthetic of the building. What it is not, is a complete detailed set of construction drawings. Those will continue to, uh, develop as we go through time. So what we're going to show you tonight will certainly be tweaked and modified as we, as we finalize the final working drawings, work through engineering coordination and get down to that actual construction document set. But schematic design does define the big picture, what these buildings look like and what's in them. Um, we meet weekly and that's probably conservative. Sometimes it's three times a week, we're here in this building, uh, meeting with different groups, uh, of district leadership. We do meet bi-weekly, uh, with what we've called the core team. And that is the, that comprises, um, district leadership. We have directors and we have the principals of each of the four elementary schools, uh, that we will be significantly replacing, all working collaboratively to help give us feedback, um, on these buildings. So what comes next? So after tonight, uh, we need to move forward, uh, into, uh, the next step of development on these two buildings, and that's design development. So again, that's further development of the systems that go into the building. We're turning our attention to the interiors, uh, of these buildings. We have the rooms defined, but now we need to look at what actually goes into those rooms. Where do windows go? Where do doors go? Where do writing surfaces, all the things that make each space in the building go? So that will be our next, uh, our next step. The city approvals process, uh, we've been working collaboratively with the various city agencies. We're trying to get out ahead, uh, of the approvals process, because we know we are on a fairly aggressive schedule, uh, to get these buildings, uh, through approvals and into the ground as, as soon as we reasonably can. So we have been working, um, again, almost every other week, meeting with city officials to make sure we are meeting their requirements and there are no surprises when we bring these, we ultimately do bring these buildings to them for, for their formal review. So just like we did with the neighborhood groups, we're working with the city officials to collect as much feedback as soon as we can so we can infuse it into our design as we, as we move through. Um, and finally bidding and start of demolition. So that will start, Chad, in...
April?
Correct. Yep, April the 8th.
April. So we are moving forward with multiple, multiple bid packages, um, as we move towards the design development, construction document phase. Certain elements will move a little bit faster, particularly things that are involved with site, the first pieces that will happen, um, on these sites. So that will start, um, yep, the spring. So at a high level, that's kind of where we've been and where we are going. So now we're gonna jump, uh, into these two buildings here. And, um, if you happen to see, um, our presentations to the neighborhood groups, or we had a meeting with staff a couple of weeks ago, this will look very familiar. Um, Lincoln Elementary will start here. So we've shown this a couple of times, uh, Lincoln, what goes and what stays. So there's an aerial view of what it looks like today. We know the 1919 building, uh, which is the oldest remaining piece on this site, is what we are maintaining, uh, on this site. We will be removing the 1930s edition, which we've since learned is actually built in 1920s, but we're keeping it to the 1930s, so we don't confuse ourselves. That will be removed. And the 1958 edition will be removed from the site. So that defines what our site, um, what site we have to work with. We started to look at the exterior of the building at Lincoln. There are a lot of design elements, uh, that are, that give Lincoln... There are a lot of design elements that are, that give Lincoln its character. And this, as you'll see in a few minutes, really very much influences the aesthetic of the new piece of Lincoln that we will be adding to it. So we're trying to respect and honor those elements that give this building its character. All of these pieces that you see on the screen are from the 1919 piece. We also did a thought exchange for each one of these sites. And this was another venue for community members to give us some of their feedback. So some of the common thoughts that we heard via this thought exchange process. One timeless exterior aesthetic. That's sort of a distillation of many different comments on the same theme, but basically this references back to the historic character of that Lincoln building. Safety and security, indoors and outdoors. That probably goes without saying in today's world, but that was a very prevalent theme. Access to natural daylight. So, and we'll see this when we go through the plans. Lincoln has the unique character in the 1919 building of being what we call a single-loaded corridor, which means that hallway only has classrooms on one side. The other side of the hall has lots of windows. So we already have that idea of lots of natural daylight in this building. A community gathering space in green outdoor spaces. This is certainly a neighborhood centerpiece and a place where the community comes together. And then improved student drop-off and a welcoming entrance. This is obviously a very small site in the middle of a dense neighborhood. So anything we could do to improve the student drop-off full in and around that site was very much on their minds. And this is just an example of that second meeting, when we did the design charrettes with the neighbors. And we had great dialogue. We gave them puzzle pieces that represent the masses of space that we have to accommodate in this building. We gave them big prints of what the site is. And we let them work through the pros and cons of organizing the building different ways. And one theme really emerged, and that was the community wanted to see the mass of the building pushed towards the east, pushed over towards East High School. That, coupled with kind of pushing the mass of the building away from the houses, the residential-scale neighborhood, also they highlighted the idea of the building itself forming a screen from the two busier streets between Wauwautosa and Milwaukee Avenues and the play space out on the site. So we left that meeting with two different options. There was some good discussion back and forth of where should that gym mass go? Should it go to the north side of the site, towards where some houses are, leaving classrooms along the south side? Or should we flip that and move the gym to the south side of the site? So this is really some of the input. And you actually see on the image on the left, a sketch of some improved drop-off, which came from our community members, some feedback. So this is the information that we took back from those listening sessions. And it brought us to our conceptual design of what this building looks like today. I'll let Michael take it from here.
So as Nick said, all that input was very valuable and informative in developing the design further. And so this is our schematic design as it stands today. It's a U-shaped form building. As Nick indicated, there was a desire to create that screen from the two major streets and really create a sheltered, protected play area that was a neighborhood amenity in the middle. So at the top of the screen, you have Underwood Avenue. To the left is Milwaukee to orient you. And starting at the top is that new improved drop-off. So along Underwood, you'll see that there is a lane provided for people to pull out of traffic and drop off kids in a more safe manner along that street. A center entrance to the, the play space in the middle of the U-shaped building. As you come into the building, there's sort of a center plaza. One of the things we heard from the neighbors was the idea of a community plaza. There seems to be a tradition of parents really bringing their kids to school and not just dropping them off, but also visiting with neighbors and other parents there. So that middle space is really provided for that. And then in the play area, there's obviously a mix of hard play space, soft play, playground equipment for separating different age groups and the like. And then coming down to the center of the space, you'll see sort of an arc that is at the front door. And that's sort of a plaza right at the new main entrance, which you'll see in the, in the exterior is a really pronounced, strong sense of entry to the building. Entering into the building, there's a new, obviously lobby that you enter into, to the right. There's a red block, which really is the administrative group, and that's a secure entrance. So you'll have to come in, be taken through the administrative wing and let into the building. So the building is fully secure. To the left of that main sort of lobby space, which is a light color in sort of a darker yellow, that is the student commons space. So that's, that's the lunch space, the event space, and things like that are happening there. Straight ahead, in the, the purple color are all the specials. So that's the art and the music room and things like that. Music room is sort of located near the sort of olive-green big box, which is the new gym. As Nick said, there was a lot of discussion about where the gym should be. It ended up on that south side of the site to provide a buffer to the busy street for sound and to keep more classrooms away from the busy street for sound as well. And also make it close to where we know you used your event parking as well, across the street at the church. So that was a good adjacency as well. And the music is close to that so that they have access to the stage or platform, as we should say, for performances. So there's some nice adjacency there. The little blue box on the lower left-hand corner is a community room. And there's an entrance right there. So there's ability to use that community room after hours and shut the rest of the building off. So they have toilet room there, and they have that community room to use as well. We swing all the way to the north side of the building now. We have all the light blue boxes, and that's all your early childhood and kindergarten rooms along there and providing those spaces. As we move up into the building onto the first floor, again, we have the U-shaped sort of, sort of plan. On the right side of that is the original building. And we have our first and second floor, our first and second grade classrooms there. They're arranged into three, a group of three classrooms that make up a house. And you'll see there's a sort of light beige color space that's in between the group of three, and that's what we call a breakout space. So that's for flexible learning. There's ability to have glass to look out onto that space, to have access to it so you can do different activities with kids there and still supervise them within your classroom. The two classrooms that are joined together also have the potential to open a wall up between them so they can do some group instruction with two classrooms gathered together as well. The dark blue boxes that occur throughout the building are really the special eds. Those have been distributed throughout the building in both of them so that they're integrated throughout the, the population of the school. They're not set off in a special wing or separated in any way. On the first floor, that sort of amber-colored box or gold-colored box in the middle, that is the IMC and the discovery lab located right there. And that's meant to be a centerpiece on that floor, really open up to the corridor. So it breaks up the length of that corridor and creates an amenity space to all on that floor. There's also off that corridor on the first floor, there's some blue boxes that are out seemingly on the roof. And there's an opportunity to do a garden space out on the roof for instructional purposes as well. Moving up to the second floor, we have our third, fourth, and fifth grades. Again, they're all arranged in a similar house where there's three classrooms, a shared breakout space for each one. And there's some dark blue boxes there as well for special ed and breakout spaces as well. As Nick said earlier, one of the positives about, that people felt about the building was the idea of daylight. And so as you can see, the idea of a single-loaded corridor is carried out throughout the building. So there'll be an abundance of that natural light and that tradition carrying on in this design as well. So this is one of our first images we'll show you of the exterior. This is looking from Underwood as if you're approaching the new entrance to the school. So the feedback from the Historic Commission and the neighborhood was really an affinity for the tradition of the 1919 building. And so if you look at the, to the left side of this entry piece, the tall piece, that's the original 1919 building. And on the right side is the, is the new construction of that entry. And the entry is new as well. So the wing in general is really a repetition of what is there. And so we'll be looking to match the brick and, and the like and the stonework to, to join it together. But the focal point really truly is the entry with a sort of a curved canopy to cover, to cover right at the doors. And then the entry piece itself really takes a, a look at the, what made the original entry to the 1919 building work. So it's a mix of some limestone and some basket weave brick, and certainly that characteristic parapet at, or the top of that entry piece, where be repeating it there and providing some new signage for the building there as well. In the foreground, you're seeing that community plaza. So we envision benches and the opportunity to drop kids off and sit there and visit with your fellow parents and maybe even have events out there. But we really do think this space out here is, is going to really truly be a neighborhood amenity for, for everybody. It's an aerial view. So down at the bottom, that is Underwood Avenue at the bottom. And you can see the, the fence that, sort of a decorative wrought iron type style with brick piers creating the enclosure of the playground. You see the community plaza in the middle, the hard play space to the right, the soft play to the left. And then that sort of focal point entry piece there with the curved canopy. To the right of that entry piece, you can see the, the double-height space that will be the commons or the lunch area. On the left side of that entry, you can see a little bit of the green roof and the potential to have some sort of a rooftop instructional garden there as well. And then obviously to the right, we have the large gym piece. And you can see again where we're really trying to pick up on the language of the 1919 building, the idea of limestone accents, the idea of basket weave brick and the stepped parapet or the step-top of the building is being carried throughout. And then the, on the left side of that courtyard is the kindergarten wing. And to the south of that wing, you can see a little outdoor classroom there as well. Wauwautosa Avenue. So on the right side, you see the original 1919 building, and you can see the original entrance. And I think you can start to see the features that we've taken and repeated to create the new sense of entry from the new entry courtyard. And you can see the piece that's sort of forming the joint between the two buildings, which you've kind of been referring to as a gasket. And so it's kind of got glass in it a lot on the sides because we're trying not to allow the old brick and the new brick to meet up because that will be a tough match. We'll certainly get as close as we can, but we don't want to let them touch because it'll become more obvious if we don't get it perfect. So that will serve as a gasket between those pieces. And then certainly, as you head south, you can see the repetition of the, of the vocabulary of the original 1919 building. And you also can see that the windows are replaced in the 1919 building. So gone will be those solid panels at the top of the windows. They'll be full windows, and I think it will really bring life to that elevation as well.
All right, well, just keep rolling. So Underwood.
Oh, can we ask questions? We should wait with questions?
Sure.
Or can I ask?
Sure.
The mechanicals for Lincoln, they are now their own HVAC, correct?
They will be in the new building, yes.
Okay. Or they will be.
Yes.
The existing, the elevator, where's the elevator placed? And the ADA?
Sure.
Accessibility between the levels?
Sure. The elevator is front and center. So there's a little X. So if you see in the corner of the yellow commons box?
Right off the lobby?
Yep.
In the lower right-hand corner of the commons?
Okay.
Right when you come in the door to the right, there'll be the elevator.
Right.
And the accessibility between the building and the gym, that's corrected?
Oh, yeah.
It's one level. Everything is one level.
Yeah, the, the gym is recessed down about three feet. So if you'll see, there's a little bit of a hallway kind of going up to the gym. That's actually a ramp, an accessible ramp that brings you down. The gym is recessed three feet partly because of the topography, the natural topography of the site, but also to kind of get the mass of that big box down. Everything, everything in this building is fully accessible.
And then no parking anywhere on the site anymore?
No parking on the site.
And that was okay with the community?
Very much so. Yes.
Okay. Those were my, I guess there was one other question. I had the early childhood classroom? Right, that's EC?
EC.
Okay. And then two 4K, and then three sections of all the other?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So going to like the whole parking comment. So I went to Lincoln, and I was just at the play there on Friday. And they use, they oftentimes will use like the blacktop as a parking area. So what will you guys be using as a substitute? Because they do use the church across the street, but then they still need more space. So what are you guys thinking for like those bigger events?
Sure, sure. Yeah, we, we did talk a lot with the neighbor, with the neighbors. We've talked a lot internally about parking, and not just on the site. Parking is a challenge kind of on most of the sites in Wauwautosa. Kind of like any urban site, and this is really is an urban site, the neighborhood grid of streets really needs to absorb that, that parking. In actuality, the parking that happens on the playground now, when you design parking lots, you design the pavement a certain way to accommodate cars. The current parking lot is really not, it's not even a parking lot. The current playground is really not set up for parking cars. So there is a bit of pro-con when you look at this, right? We're trying to achieve a lot from a community gathering space and play space and green space, because there's much green on the Lincoln site right now, in a very limited area. So the decision, our decision to this point has been, we're going to value the human scale on the site over parking of cars.
Any questions?
Was there anything that emerged that we weren't able to speak to or respond to? So things that kind of came up as repeated points or wishes that we just couldn't make work with the site?
I don't think so. Nothing of significance. You know, one of the differences, say, between Lincoln and Underwood is, of course, Lincoln, we're keeping a portion of existing building. And with any renovation, even one that's as extensive as this one, there are some limitations that that building puts on you, right? So within the existing building, you know, some of the, some of the dimensions, like the depths of the classrooms, aren't necessarily what we would, exactly what we'd do in a brand-new building. They're very close, you know, within a couple of feet. So that's a very minor limitation. It becomes more of a proportion thing than anything. But no, from a programmatic standpoint, we were able to fit everything into this.
Thank you.
If, it, I don't know. It was interesting to me how you dealt with the different elevations on the Lincoln site. That was, there's a lot of expertise you put into that. That might be interesting for people to hear a little bit about your challenges.
Sure, sure. Lincoln site isn't quite as flat as it, as it might seem. So I mentioned the gym and kind of pushing that down three feet. So if you can picture Lincoln today, when you come into the 1919 building, you actually go up essentially half a floor from where the, the main entrance is today. And then you go down towards the 1950s building. You go down essentially a whole floor to the 1950s building. All of that's going away in the new building. And all of our floor elevations, except for the gym, will actually align floor to floor. So that's no small feat, how we were able to kind of position this building. The U shape of this building actually helps us with that. So the building, in essence, kind of acts a little bit as a retaining wall, if you can picture that. It's kind of helping with the higher elevation towards East High School. And then it creates, it gives us the ability to actually start to level out the playing field on the west side of the site. So kind of all these nuances of positioning the building into the site help give us, I think, more usable or better space that is there today. One, and we can pick it up here. There are a few things that are going on even from this side of the building. You will see, if you can picture again that, how the building fronts Underwood today, there's a pretty significant drop down to the sidewalk. That's where that fence line comes from. That's how we negotiate that elevation change from the playground down to the street. So you'll see a couple of stairs and a ramp for accessible, accessibility onto the site. The other thing that's happening that's, you really can't see in this image, is the sidewalk from those front steps up to the front door is actually a slight slope. So it's very subtle, but the site is graded to, to take up some more of that elevation change. And then the play area, the hard play space to the right, where you can kind of make out some of the kickball base paths in there, that's actually recessed down just a little bit. So it actually gets down to be a flat playing surface on the same, roughly the same elevation as the gymnasium. So there's some subtleties in the site that allow kind of for these rooms, these outdoor rooms, to, to be created and make them the most usable that they can be without putting impediments in the way of anyone, student, staff, community, or otherwise. It'll trigger your site then, it looked like.
So if I'm going to show in the gymnasium or the performance area, So if I'm going to show in the gymnasium or the performance area, how do I get into the gym if I'm in a wheelchair?
Sure. Well, if you dropped off on Underwood, so you can kind of see our two lanes of the street and the third lane for drop-off. We haven't gotten to that detail in the rendering yet, but there will be, of course, curb cuts and accessible ramps up. You'll see just to the left of that main stair, there's a bit of a ramp there. Let me get up and point to it.
Oh, thank you.
Right here.
Oh, got it. Okay.
So you're dropped here, then accessible ramp here, and then this is a very slight slope. It's not even sloped enough to qualify as a ramp up to the front door. Come through the building and down the ramp into the gym.
Okay, so the door, was my question was going to be the door that's outside of those basketball courts?
Yeah.
That is not an entry door?
No.
Okay.
Oh, no. At the end of the gym? No, those are not, those are egress doors.
Emergency exit.
Those are emergency, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got two goofy questions. One, if you kick a kickball into the tree, do you get a home run? So that'll be answered later.
Those are Lincoln rules, yes.
Okay, yeah, right. So first thing to figure out. The second question, with the rooftop garden, I have an opinion about that. I just noticed that it ends as opposed to running over the rest of the north side of the building. And I just wanted to know like if there's a specific reason it has to end, or is it just like a cost thing, or is it a garden?
It's a balance of cost and functionality. So there's no technical reason it would have to end. What we're trying to do is create a space that would be accessible. So we see it as a potential learning space. So rather than, with the resources that we have, we want to put those as close to where students can see them, can interact with them. So we're kind of trying to cluster them around that outdoor learning space.
We also need to leave, limit the space to a size that doesn't get too big, or we have to provide secondary exit off of it for emergencies. So it's limited by that code reason. And that's also a cost factor. If we had to add more stairs and things like that, would that cost?
So is it safe to say, once you go up that ramp, that all of that space is completely accessible?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
So.
Is there fencing on the green space area, rooftop garden?
Yes, yes. Actually, the railing that.
I mean, I'm just.
We've been talking about that.
You didn't say, I'm assuming.
There's been a lot of discussion about that. Actually, the green that you see is, would be like a green roof, maybe like succulents growing on the roof. And actually, the space that you see sort of covered for the outdoor classroom has a railing that keeps the kids that far away from the edge. They're not allowed to get to the edge of the roof. So we're holding them away a good distance on purpose.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanted to highlight, like, and say like, thank you for putting in unisex bathrooms in the elementary school level. And I noticed that there's quite a few of them. And that's something that many high school students have come to me and say like, oh, like, we wish that there were more. Because there's only one currently at East. So I wanted to say, thanks for putting those in there.
Thank you for noticing.
Yeah.
All right, Underwood. So we went through a similar process as we did for Lincoln in terms of the input for the site. Certainly, this is starting as we did with Lincoln, what stays, what goes. This shows the building, the whole building goes. So one of the challenges really here was also, you know, building around it and keeping it working, dealing with that, keeping the sledding hill and dealing with some utility issues. It looks like a big site, but as everybody starts to play with it, it tightens up when you get those ball fields on there and you get the building on there and then really have to build around an existing building. It had its own unique challenges. We looked at the building, as Nick said, we went and visited with the Historic Commission. They don't, they don't see it in the same league as the 1919 building. There wasn't a lot of community, we love this about the building, could you save it? Other than the little, in the bottom slide in the middle, there's a series of tiles that have sort of us, child, children's story characters in it. And we're probably going to try and look and see if we can get those out and maybe incorporate them somewhere in the library or something like that would be a neat little touch. But other than that, not a lot of warm and fuzzies for this building. The neighborhood, unlike the very, you know, sort of dense neighborhood that is Lincoln, this is a much more open character, more natural, one could say. The houses have a tradition of sort of wood siding, brick and stone on bigger lots. It's just a very different sense of space, more open character to it. And certainly that was going to inform the design as well. Some thoughts from the thought exchange that we heard, again, safety and security. Access to natural light was important to this group as well. The idea of community and gathering, improved drop-off and welcoming entrance, natural materials. They thought, I think they recognized the character of the site, maybe had a little more nature to it and they wanted to capitalize on it. And the sledding hill was very important.
We didn't even know there was a sledding hill until this thought exchange.
Again, we did the puzzle play. We gave them the site. We gave them all the pieces and what looked like a giant site quickly filled up and then they found how tight it was. And so we got some, some good ideas here about the drop-off and how that should work, where the playing fields might be towards the north of the site. And we wrestled with how to form that building around and keep the existing school operational and build a new building around it. There was a precedence piece that we kind of looked at, too. This was a school that I think the palette of materials really brought the idea of nature through this sort of wood-like siding, metal and glass and stone seemed to maybe influence this design a little bit in terms of that capturing the idea of nature on the site. So this is a site plan for Underwood. To the left is Potter Road, where the parking lot is. That's where the existing building is. And so this building is designed to kind of horseshoe itself around the existing building and be built while that building stays operational. So we have a U-shaped drop-off for the parents in the front of the building, obviously parking lot in the middle. The main entrance is sort of down at the bottom in the elbow of the building, if you will. That's the main entrance to the school. To the top of the drawing, there is an event entrance, which we'll see in the plan, provides entrance for the gym and some activities after hours. To the backside of the building, we have hard surface play, the circle. To the bottom right is a soft play area, similar to what we're providing at Lincoln. And then we have, certainly unlike Lincoln, we have opportunity to have some baseball fields and the like and soccer and things like that on the north side of the site.
So the baseball, just to clarify, the baseball field stays where it is today. The softball field is relocated.
Question?
Yeah.
The outfield from my amateur eye seem to overlap. Is that a problem at all?
No, that's actually not an uncommon thing for us to do. It will limit, what you could do is a permanent fence, like say a baseball field, you would not put a permanent fence out there. That doesn't mean you couldn't do a temporary fence at some point if so needed. But no, on sites like this, it's not an uncommon thing to overlap.
So the, so a couple of observations on this. How many, oh, there are 70 parking spots? That's a significant increase. Then I see there's turf, concrete?
Oh, yeah, that's something that we're exploring. That's, that's part of our ongoing dialogue with the fire department. So that's, not to get too deep into technical stuff, but we do have to provide frontage access for fire trucks and apparatus to get around the building. So there are a few options that we're exploring on how to do that. One of them is, it's a, it's a paver system that allows grass to grow through it. We're exploring that right now. There's some pros and cons. Pros, it's grass, it's green. Cons, it's really difficult to plow and you have to plow it in our climate and keep it accessible. So we're, we're working through that right now. We want to be sensitive to how much hardscape we have on the site, even though it is a little bit larger. But that's one of the options that we're looking at.
And then the drainage of these fields? They get really wet in that corner? Is that corrected or that won't be corrected?
Not necessarily. So that's, that's sort of a function of the site that we have right now. That is a lower line part of the site. Now, what, what might help, and we're working through some of the stormwater calc right now, is we will actually have stormwater management on the site. So what that means, virtually none of the current school sites, because they were built many, many years ago, maintain stormwater controls on, within their, their footprint. These new ones will, which means that some of that stormwater that would fall during a rainstorm or melting snow would likely run down the hill into those fields will now be collected and maintained up, kind of at the bottom of the sled hill. It's a dry pond where it absorbs into the ground. So the total amount of water that's going to be running downhill towards those fields will likely be reduced. So that may help, but it will still be a low-line part of the site.
Where's the sledding hill?
Sure. Good question. I'd ask that.
I think I know, but.
Right in.
Oh, okay. That's what I was thinking. Okay.
And where the stormwater will be maintained right down. The pressure is around the water will soak in.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we lose any of the soccer field space? I know there's just a ton of rec soccer that's played on this site. Do we lose any of that, any of the overall, with the outfield of the softball and baseball?
So there are a couple of things. One, there could be soccer fields overlaid on outfield of those, the baseball softball fields. That's one option. The second area is going back into that wing. So there are a bunch of different ideas of what we could do with that site, from prairie to nature area to additional green play space, that you have that land available to add any number of things. Soccer field would be one back there.
I have one more question. So if you are going to the baseball or the softball games or the soccer practice, where do you park and how do you get from the parking lot to the fields?
Sure. Well, a couple of places. We were actually just working on this today. So one, we're looking at potentially a sidewalk along 113th Street that would bring you back. So that's if you park along the street. The second area, obviously parking, the parking lot here, this is all paved around here. So we potentially will have a sidewalk linking back to this hardscape, back to this area. For this meeting, Melissa and I have been talking about opportunities to link this way.
Because currently, we do have parking along that, along that corner, right? Potter Road, but you can't get to the bottom.
You cannot, you can park along Potter, but you cannot park along the side street.
Yeah, 113th.
No, there's a parking spot at this corner of the site that, that access the fields below.
Yeah, on the.
Current, yeah, current. But there's also parking in front of the building, too. There's two sets of parking currently. So, I mean, and in addition, people do park on 113th Street still to access the fields. So there, there's actually three parking areas in the, in our prior, or in today's, you know, current situation. I, I see that to be difficult for people getting to the field if we can't figure out how to, you know, do some parking.
Parking closer to the field?
Because they walk away around to get to the field. I mean, they won't have access to the interior of the building.
No, they'd walk around the building.
And then are there, well, then that poses another problem if we have these fields. Are there any bathroom access points?
Well, not specifically for the fields. So when we look at the floor plans, you could potentially open the community room, which has a toilet room, and lock off from the rest of the building.
But there aren't currently bathrooms there for the weekends anyway, right?
No.
Just a port of that.
Yeah, just a port of that.
But again, I think our goal, too, is to improve these sites so that they're community buildings, too. So.
Sure.
If we're doing that at Lincoln, we want to do that if possible at Underwood. But it's just my thought. I, I want the fields to be used and the community spaces and for people to have access to bathrooms if possible.
So Sharon, I did meet with civil engineering on Friday and just wanted to clarify, and actually I might even go up to the screen, I know I'm not going to be on mic, but there's been some, some landscape changes already for that reason. So we, we recognize that. Right now, you park, there are technically two parking lots, if you want to call them lots. One of them on the, obviously on the, on the east side, closest. You cannot go down to that area, though. It is chained off. So you can't go down closer to the fields to park. So you really are parking very close to the street. And then in that case, you do have to still walk all the way essentially kind of around the building to get to those fields now. So the change, the layout doesn't change too much. The only difference is we slid the building over a little bit. And one thing that we are, we are talking about, as Nick mentioned, is obviously trying to get that path to that parking lot area around the building, which we think actually is going to be feasible. The other piece of it that's not shown, and this is where I'm going to show up here. All right. Thanks, Tim. So right along here, we're actually going to be taking and cleaning up this corner here and with landscape management, we actually are going to put concrete path with ADA accessibility all the way around the building. So again, to that softball field, there'll be access. And then you go around and there's actually going to be a link to this existing path already, which will be tied into here and then tied back into here. So it will, it will have accessibility. It's not going to have, it does pose a little bit of a challenge because of obviously this wing here. But we, we feel we've, we'll address that with this, this kind, the additional sidewalk there. I just want to clarify that. And then also for soccer fields, we did talk about, there will be one full-size soccer field still available. And that full-size, we do mean by the measurements of typical soccer, WIA. And then also two smaller fields. And then with Tosa Kickers, they still have three or four mini fields and those would also fit on there. Right now, we do have to paint the lines over the outfield now. So again, that's not changing much either.
And no lights currently on the drawing?
You mean athletic plates?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
We've had some discussions about the idea of doing that and trying to find some partners to help fund those. We're going to continue to explore that because it actually would be an advantage to at least get the electrical ready for that concept.
Right.
Well, I'm even thinking with 70 parking spots there, aren't you going to need a light?
Oh, yeah, there's lighting on. It is lit, yes.
Okay.
Yes, there will be light.
I thought you were talking about the baseball.
Well, that too, well, that too. I mean, you know, I mean, from a security perspective, safety perspective. I mean, and, you know, it gets dark now at 5:00, so.
It's getting better.
You know, a lot of, you know, I know, sad, but, you know, at certain times of the year, I mean, it's a concern and we do have people on the property at all different times, so.
Yeah, actually, so that's part of that continuing development of these drawings. We had a meeting with a lighting designer on Thursday afternoon, looking at exactly that, where we are putting lights on the parking lot, how we are providing security lighting around the perimeter, where we are even potentially looking at some low-level lighting along walkways coming up to the building. So that's kind of that next level of development, how we get to those, those pieces. We do have to be cognizant of really all these schools. We are in residential neighborhoods, so there's a balance there between how much light do we provide for good safety on the site, but also not be overlighting the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm asking too many questions.
No, it's great.
So then the other, the other concern I have is the sloping of, you know, the grading of the property and how these play areas, how much of a, is there a hill between those areas and the fields? Now it's flat.
No, I mean, there's a, there'll be a very gentle slope.
Okay.
To keep water flowing away from the building, but no. So here, too, kind of like Lincoln, the building actually acts sort of as a retaining wall. So we, you'll see when we get to the images, the wing, this kind of classroom wing going up to the left, is actually kind of embedded into the hill. So it helps us negotiate those topographic changes from the high side over on Potter down to the low side of the baseball fields.
So if we were to receive approval for sidewalks, essentially there wouldn't be a lot of sloping or anything along that side to get to the fields?
Along the south side of that site, there would be some slope to it. You have less slope along the north side of that, of that site. And that's just a function of how the site, how the site itself is sloping.
And the east? And the east?
Oh, I'm sorry, the east. I'm talking, sorry, east-west.
Well, I might have gotten my direction.
Let me walk up.
Okay. I have a lot of questions about this site.
Sure. All right. So the site naturally is steeper along this side than it is along this side. So just by function of what we have here on our site, and there's only so much that you can do because we don't own the land down here, this will be steeper. So this will be a sloped, not, I'm not talking ski hill slope, but there will be slope wrapping around here. This walk along this side will be, for all intents and purposes, pretty close to flat. That's a much gentler slope along this side of the building.
Okay.
Mr. Dome?
Well, one of the things I really liked about your Lincoln design was that community gathering space that you had.
Yeah.
That doesn't exist here. Is that a function of people use the school differently, not as many people walk through it, or am I making a mistake?
We're doing something similar. It's a different form along the front of the building that links sort of the main entry to the building and the event entrance along there. There's some special paving and benches and so that's really it. It's just in a different shape. It's not as square, it's more long and linear.
But that'll be a way for parents to kind of congregate and stuff like that.
Just to add to that, you even, I remember some reference you all made about how you configured the parking so that when the, you know, the drop-off could handle with, with the, still have the gathering space so the kids wouldn't be running across, you know?
Yep.
So do you have any perspective on that?
Yeah.
Oh. I mean, you, you have a rich answer, so it's, it'd be nice to hear, to hear how you went through this.
So there are, there are a couple of things here. So this, of the four elementary schools that we're going to be designing, this is kind of the unique one where we, we have an opportunity for fairly large parking lots. So when we, we think about how cars arrive on site and what, what does it mean to, to arrive, to drop off versus park? They're two very different things that happen on a school site. So you'll notice very intentionally the access to the parking is pulled away from the drop-off area closest to the school. That's really somewhat intentionally to make at the drop-off and pickup time of the day, this a little bit less convenient. We don't want people coming in and having kids come out into that parking lot where it's a little bit less supervised. We want if, if students are coming to be picked up by car, we want to eliminate as much possibility of a student and a car crossing paths. So this is very intentionally a very long drop-off and you'll see sidewalk running along the entire perimeter of it. We're trying to create as much kind of surface area or linear feet of drop-off space to let cars pull in as deep as they can and queue up. So this is designed sort of like the airport. So if you're dropping off at the airport, you pull up to the curb side, you drop off, you have a passing lane so people can pull away and very safely move on the left and exit the site. This sidewalk and some of the pavement and the design that Michael was talking about in this plaza are really intended to be, and you'll see when we look at what this looks like of the exterior in a minute, these are intended to be those, those very friendly welcoming gathering spaces that as the students drop off, you walk safely, never crossing the traffic, the traffic lane to get up to the front door of the school. So it's a little bit different organization just by, by nature of what we have going on in this site with parking and really more cars coming onto the site or coming out of the site period, as opposed to what we have at Lincoln.
Yeah, the Potter Road drop-off is really horrendous. It's just...
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm excited about this. And it'll be one-way, right?
Yeah.
Trying to pull as many cars off of that street onto this controlled environment for drop-off.
Let's go inside the building.
All right. So let's walk through the building a little bit here. On the first floor here, you have the, the drop-off lane we just talked about, that sort of community plaza that links the main entry of the new school to the community event entrance that's located down here. So upon entering the building here, you have the lobby to the right. This is the administrative block here. And we, again, just like Lincoln, we have a secure entrance. You have to pass through there to get into the building and be allowed in. The purple here, just like on Lincoln, is the specialty classes. So we have our art room, our music room. Again, that's near where we have our platform performances. So that's a good adjacency. Community room located near the event entrance, so that can be shut off and used separate while the rest of the school is shut off. In the green, we have the, the new gym with a platform located here. And this platform is a little different than Lincoln in that it has a stage to the gym for big groups and for little, smaller groups, it opens to the commons as well. So that's platform can give performances to either space. And that space here along through the lobby and that commons is a double-height space or three-story-high space that brings a lot of natural light into the building. We have a monumental stair here that will go up to the upper level. And then down along this wing here, we have all of the kindergarten classrooms, similar to Lincoln, they're all together, early childhood and all the kindergarten rooms along there. As we move up into the building on the second floor, we have first and second grade classrooms located here. And again, they're in that three-classroom arrangement where there's a breakout room that these rooms can go directly out onto. And then these two classrooms have a movable wall that allow them to go together so that these can become a big instructional area here as well. Those breakout rooms are also somewhat related to each other, so if you had a bigger event, that they could form a larger flexible instructional area there. Up here in the sort of the brown-colored box, that's the IMC and the Discovery Lab, which have ability to look down into the common space from the upper level. And again, we have our special eds, which are the darker blue, the speech on the first floor with the waiting area here. And we have some other special eds up in here and then up on the top floor as well. Again, they're broken up so that they're within the population and not in the special wing. On the second floor here, we have a small rooftop garden, similar to Lincoln, so they would have that same opportunity to have some instructional space out there with some space to grow some things. And then on the top floor, we have our third, fourth, and fifth. And again, they're arranged in those sort of three classroom pods, if you will, with the breakout areas and the breakout areas related to each other for larger instruction. And then a large group collaborative instructional area here in the sort of the hinge of the Then we get to the exterior. And so very different than Lincoln with the very traditional historic precedent of the original building here. That idea of natural materials, stone and glass for natural light and capturing the sense of the nature, nature of the site was really the influencer here. So there's some stone at the base of the building. This is a cementitious siding material that looks like siding, not like siding, but it looks like clavoured or wood on the outside of the building, but low maintenance. Again, stone accents and metal and lots of glass. As you can see, you're entering into a multi-height space, so it's going to bring lots of natural light into the new building and the opportunity to have Underwood Fireflies logo a prominent feature of the entrance. Here's a view of the building looking northeast. So you have obviously the new main entrance here, the drop-off, main entrance here, this is the event entrance here with the gym behind, the common space behind here. And then we have our classroom wing coming out here. And this is that outdoor classroom space on top of that one story. And here you can also see what Nick was talking about, how the building is kind of going into the grade here and forming a transition between the higher part of the site here and the lower part of the site on the back of the building. Aerial view of a similar kind of northeast look. So obviously the drop-off, rooftop classroom, classroom wing, sort of the main entry volume with the column, commons there, bringing natural light down in through the glass, main entrance, the event entrance, gym, and then the playfields to the distance. And then a view looking southeast. So here you see the backside of the gym here, the exit out of the commons coming out to the soft player here, we have our playfields, our hard play surface is located here, sledding hills here. And a little detail of the, of the commons. This would be the glass into the common space, the taller glass piece along the commons there. This is the covered outdoor classroom on the backside, the soft play area to the left and the hard surface play area here. And here you get a sense of the materiality of brick, stone, the wood-like material here. And another aerial view looking this time southwest. So this is our standard sort of classroom wing along here with, again, the sort of the wood material here, brick, and then stone, creating a real natural material palette for the, for the building. That's it. And that's the tour. If you have questions?
So along the thinking of that gathering area, why is the parking set back from the road? So it seems that if the parking was closer to the road, then the drive would, well, the drive would be shorter, the drop-off loop, but do you see, you know, the green space between the road and the parking?
Yeah.
What if the green space and the parking were...
Flipped?
Or the, or the green space was put between the building and the drive?
Potentially you, you could do that. It would increase the walking distance from somebody who did park somewhat, not, not a huge deal. There's a little bit more up slope, but I don't think it's unmanageable.
I mean, I'm not saying I'm, I'm promoting it. I'm, it's a curiosity question that Lincoln does have that actually very large gathering place. And it seems that that green that's between the parking and the street, if we put that green between the building and the drop-off, you, yeah, the people parking would have to walk farther, but the people getting dropped off wouldn't be so close to the building and there'd be more gathering kind of place. I mean, maybe there's reasons why you don't do that, but I'm just throwing that out there for conversation.
Sure. I, I think if we, if we did that, if our desire was to increase kind of that gathering space, maybe what, what I would suggest is, just hold on to this microphone. You know, again, we, we want to be careful we don't create an attractive place for kids to gather before school and then have cars circulating between them.
Right, which is why I, I meant to make the legs of the, of the U shorter.
Yeah, take this whole thing and...
Yeah, and the green would go between the building and the drop, yeah, like that, right. And the green might be something else then, if you envisioned it for a gathering place.
Yeah. Could be, could be.
Because the green right now really isn't being utilized, is it?
No.
It's, it's...
It's grass.
Not that it's not important, but it's, it's green space, but no people are going to utilize that in the conception we have.
Right, not likely. Yeah, that's something we could take a look at. You know, the only potential downside to that is you would lose some, some of this frontage. I don't think it'd be huge, but we could take a look, see what that would, what that would do.
I mean, I'm just one person with a question, so.
I think it's, I actually really like it. I mean, I, the thing I would wonder to your point is like, how much would that potentially slow down drop-off? Or, and I don't know, but I actually really like the idea of more space and it does keep the kids further from the cars. So I think it's great.
Well, and it's me and Mr. Dome, you had the question about Lincoln has a nice, I mean, really a nice gathering place and we, we don't have that here, but maybe we could have it if...
So, I'll take the microphone. So elevation change, so we looked at this on Friday. We tried to push this back a little bit. Unfortunately, this slope, so if you're familiar with Whitman, that is going to be the slope right here. I don't know if that's expressed enough and it's not shown here because obviously elevation isn't shown, it's only on paper. So right here, we have a slope that is similar to Whitman and then we go to a flat parking lot. So to get that parking lot up on that hill is, it becomes really difficult. We can push it back slightly, but even then, then we have drainage issues. So to get into that, and we are looking at probably asphalt and things of that nature to try to protect that a little bit, but it's still, it's a challenge. One thing that we did talk about, obviously this little goofy corner over here that I just, I nearly said...
She said goofy.
I'm sorry. So one thing that we talked about the landscape architects was moving this and creating this corner over here, we have a lot, it doesn't look like as much room as is there, but there actually is quite a significant amount of room. So we're going to actually circle this corner with some benches and make that more of a entire gathering space. So it's a little bit long, but it still brings them closer to the building and really emphasizes that corner as your gathering space. So that is changing as well and it changed even as of Friday. So just want to bring that up. We can still look into it more, we just didn't because of that slope and that grade change.
Well, even, even if the whole move couldn't be made if there was any, you know, room to slide it some, I mean, you have to tell us, of course, what's workable and what's not.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can look and see. I mean, I think we gained about two feet or so.
Well, that's, could be, it's two feet still, you know? I mean, why give it away?
I, I really concur with that idea, too. This space I'm intrigued by because it, the backside of the school, which is hidden for reasons that may probably make sense to me, for the play areas that the school opened off and all the challenges you have of building it around an existing school. I think anything we can do to make that area, that is, it's a major community gathering spot in limited ways. So Saturday mornings, there are literally more parents out there who weren't on, in that area the rest of the week. So to find ways to, to subtly increase amenities, make it easy to navigate.
Stroller-friendly.
It, it is a, it is a way where a lot of parents who are even...
Desperate.
It, it gets them, I think, connected, finding ways to engage with them. An outdoor restroom, I think, right now, what's the, what's the university that's over there?
Ryan Stratton.
Ryan Stratton is like the only, I think, restrooms that are available. But things that we can do within the budget that we have to make that easily navigable, usable in that time period is important, I think, for the community.
Okay. I think a lot of that can be improved through some of the circulation, how we plan those pathways from the parking. And you're right, you know, the, we keep saying the ideal spot for this building is exactly where the building sits today. So if we could just get that building out of the way, it'd be perfect, but we can't. So it does impose a little bit of limitation on us. So I think you're absolutely right. The more we can think about how those pathways are laid out, and, and even to the stroller comment, that is something we've talked about. And actually, we got some good commentary at the Lincoln site about that and how we can provide better stroller access on that site. So again, I, I mean, I think the, the topography of the site going around towards the west side of the building, top of this, is where that is probably the best path, most accessible path around it. So, yeah, that's good comment. We'll take a look at that.
Oh, thank you. So just to, so I understand moving the drop-off to the west doesn't work because of the sledding hill?
Yeah, that was, we, that was one of the things we heard loud and clear from the neighbors. We want to maintain that sledding hill. Does it mean we can't? No, but we'd lose our, lose some more green space and we'd lose that amenity.
And then is there a way to limit access to the actual classrooms on that first floor? So you could allow people from the, I'm trying to think of this, south, south, no, north, north access into the commons?
Yeah.
So that, I mean, it looks like you could kind of segregate that whole classroom wing so that people could access that commons going into the gym?
Absolutely. Both buildings are set up this way. I probably should have mentioned it. Really tiny, that little thing right there, those are doors that allow you to lock up this entire portion of the buildings, all the academic wings. So there are actually, there are three levels of access that we're, we're organizing these buildings around. The first one and smallest one is, as Michael pointed out, is the, the community room. So in both the buildings, so we... So, in both the buildings that we looked at today, you can open just that little piece of the building. So, there are doors here that lock that off, and there's a door directly to the community room and its own toilet room. So, you can literally open just that corner of the building. The next phase is jumping back to that line, which then opens community room, gym, and Commons. So, these specials are still here, but presumably, we lock those doors. So, you just have access to that portion of the building. And then, you open these doors and the building's open.
With the number of parking stalls at 70, is there like a reason for 70? What is, how did we arrive at that number, just to know?
Sure. Right now, it's really fitting as many as we can. We're trying to balance the amount of green space on the site. It's not set by any formula that's, there's no code requirement that says we have to have 70 stalls.
How many were at the site today? I guess there, because there's two different?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, it's about 60 or so. I mean, there's actually, it doesn't seem like it, but there's...
Because there's two different lines?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That whole front, the side, into the center.
Because to Mr. Myers, I wondered if, if he just lopped off, you know, those first...
I follow what you're saying.
Row of spots, would that give you the green space for that?
I think we're running pretty low on, we're, we need more parking, like, we need more parking everywhere. But I think it's a balance. You know, the other thing to think about too is, for events, the driveway in is going to be big enough where people will park. You know, I don't know if that's an additional 20 cars around the loop.
Right.
But that'll park probably 20 more cars, 10.
For events.
Depends what kind of car.
Like do-it long, right?
Like you everywhere.
Oh, you're right.
Parking according to what it's also raised.
So, with the classrooms that you can split and then like open up with like the doors, do those doors like provide any like excess noise or anything, or excess distractions to those classrooms?
Good question. We were just having a conversation on that Thursday. So, we're starting to explore what, what technically those doors are. So, again, that's another one of those next level pieces. There are a bunch of options that we're going to be exploring. Some of the options could be glass doors, some could be glass with kind of a frosted film on them. There are options where they are pocketed panels with writable surface, they're whiteboards that can close off those doors. So, sound is very important when we think about those doors linking the classrooms. What we can say is, the best thing for sound is a solid wall, right? The next best thing is a door that has a track. So, it's not just, you know, something that's hung from a track up above. It actually engages in the bottom and the top. So, whether it's glass or it's a solid panel, there will be, if somebody's screaming or yelling very loud on the other side, you'll hear something. But it's not enough that, in our experience, it's been a distraction. That answers your question.
Yeah.
Good, good thought though, that is something we have to consider.
Yeah.
With the space that you have, so you have the glass walls that are looking down from the library, I think, right, to the... Any concern about that being a distraction either for students in the library looking out to friends eating lunch or doing something, you know, I like, I love the idea of glass.
Yeah, there was, in, in the meetings with the Lincoln, you said a lot of the staff were at some of the meetings, and there was a lot of concern about that and the idea that it, they first of all wanted it enclosed. They didn't want it open because of obviously, sound from the Commons coming up into the IMC and vice versa, it just wouldn't be good. So, you know, we're, we're putting glass that looks down into there. It doesn't all go down to the floor, so there's some, for the children, you're not going to be able to necessarily see down all the time, but there'll be spots where you can look down in, and so we're trying to provide the right amount of visibility and sound control.
Ultimately, you can use window coverings, wall chains.
Yes.
If it becomes an issue.
Yep. Any other questions, comments on the schematic design presentation for this discussion? Any community comment on this presentation before we vote? Come on up. Do we have to move the microphone, or is it fine right there? Okay. Yep, if you want to just come up to the microphone, that'd be great. And just say your name and address.
Cheryl Hokinson, 2410 North 81st Street. I have some questions about the Lincoln design. There's a lot of kids that come from east of 76th Street, and now they come across at Warren Avenue, and now they come just to the end of the building, and they can go onto the playground. Now, it looks like they have to go all the way down to Underwood and go to the middle of Underwood to get on that playground. Now, if you're five years old and you're walking to school, not every kid gets a ride to school. And in fact, we have walking schools supposedly. We've gotten away from that quite a bit, but that's a long walk. That adds an extra block and a half at least. And if you're coming from 70th Street?
There are, besides entering at that center point here, there was discussion from the neighborhood that a lot of people come on strollers and walk over here or bike over. So, you can enter into the playground through here, or there's an additional point here with bike racks here that come into the main play area, and also along here, again, with some bike racks here where you come into that center area. So, there's three points of entry into there.
I'm also, as a tax-paying citizen, and a person who went to Lincoln School, actually, I don't quite understand why we're knocking down a gym and then putting up another gym in exactly the same spot. The gym that's there seems to function pretty darn good. It's a very nice gym because I've taken rec department classes at many schools in Wauwatosa, and Lincoln Gym seems to be one of the nicer ones. So, what, why are, are we like, got too much money, or what's the deal on that?
So, part of the gym discussion is really around what is a proper size. By current standards, that's actually a very small gym for an elementary school. So, what this new gym allows us to do is actually run two separate sections of PE in that space simultaneously. It will be divisible by a curtain, so that's kind of a curricular piece and a programming piece. It also gives us more, more gym space.
Two sections of gym at one time?
You can run two sections of gym at one time. You can divide it with a curtain.
Are we getting two gym teachers now there, or what's going to go on with that?
Building is designed for the future, to accommodate up to three full sections of students in this building. So, that's part of the flexibility of programming the overall building. The other part is, as we've understood, a general shortage of gym space for rec purposes. So, this gives us now two courts for, for purposes. We also have the ability to have a full regulation-sized basketball court in that gymnasium, which we do not in the current gym. That is actually a very small gymnasium that exists there today.
Okay. And if you park at the church parking lot and you want to go into that gym, do you have to go all the way around to that center thing in the middle at the back?
Yep. So, if this were open for, say it's a weekend and there's something going on in the gym, again, the way this building can be locked off is, is right here. So, just like we described at Underwood, you can operate the gym, the Commons, and the community room separate from the rest of the school. So, you can utilize this entrance to come in. So, that's a weekend function. If this were during a school day, the school, from an operational standpoint, would have the choice. Do you, from a security standpoint, does everybody come in the front door? Or, to manage crowds, do you close it and allow two access points? That's an operational...
And if you are coming when the school is closed down with a wheelchair, first of all, I have an issue with the wheelchair thing. You said, oh, well, you can get off here. Do you realize how lo, how far of a way that is to go from Underwood all the way up that ramp, through that gathering space, down there and over? That's a long way to go if you're in a wheelchair. Is there access on that south end for a wheelchair?
There will be on that site. So, that's something that we're working on with the civil meetings that we're having, as late as Friday, designing that entrance to really be a fully functional entrance if so chosen.
Okay. And then, I have another question. My grandchildren go to that school, and I know from experience, when I was remodeling my house, it took me months and months and months to organize and get everything going. These kids are getting kicked out of their classroom in about eight weeks. They have really, they're going to closets, and they have, some of them, they don't know where they're going. They were signing permission slips this week so that during FIAID and, and I don't know what other time, they can go wandering around in the neighborhoods with their teachers in lieu of being on their playground. What exactly is the rush on this whole thing?
I don't think anyone wants to chime in?
I'll comment on, it's not a rush, it's what we told the community we were going to do before they voted to support the referendum, and we have an obligation. Part of it is to follow through and have them completed when we said we would. As we went around...
Now, when, when we had a referendum, it didn't look anything like this.
I'm not talking about the designs.
I voted on a totally different thing than what I see right here.
Right, I'm just talking about your question.
The timeframe.
The timeline, right. And so, that's the timeline that was given out. So, that's what, we want to have these completed in a timely manner as soon as possible.
And where are the kids going to go?
Oh, Mrs. Minor, I think, could speak to that. She's...
So, we have a plan, and I've been trying to work with my classroom teachers as well as specialists. And I've told parents, and I had a meeting this morning trying to figure out our wrap care and what marches will look like. I can guarantee that each student, we will have full-size classrooms. Nobody's going to be in a closet anywhere. We did send home a permission slip. I love that the teachers are working together to think creatively. Over the summer, East High School over there, we're going to get the turf field, and so, we'll probably use some of that for gym, but we're just trying to think creatively. If we need a break, maybe we'll go for, not just gallivanting around the neighborhood, but we can go for a recreational walk, and we can look at things, and just ways to keep the kids active during this time. But I'll be sending home probably, as soon as I get the finalized with our lunch program and our after-school program, and those sites and where everybody is going to be, a plan for where every classroom will be. But every student, we're looking at the space that they'll be in, and teachers are involved in that process as well, thinking about which classrooms go where as far as accessibility, which students need to be in places, how do we group classrooms together to have the least amount of movement? Because we know that this is a transition, it's going to take place right at spring break, but then we'll also have to be thinking next year, there'll probably be some more transitions, a little bit of flexibility to get to the end product. And we know that that's going to be a little bit difficult, but hopefully, it'll be a learning experience as well. Try to keep everybody involved as much as we can.
Okay. Then, my next thing is, when I went to the polls, this is not what I was voting on. This is nothing like what I was voting on. I feel like I've been duped. I voted $125 million for not that, something else. So, why did we not have this plan before we went to the polls so we knew what we were voting on?
So, the plans that were shared pre-referendum were essentially proof of concept, that you could in fact fit the program, which is the same program that's embodied in this building.
You mean, the same number of rooms and elevator?
Yep, the same functionality that was tested on each one of those four sites. In this case, in a different shape, but the same parts and pieces were included in that. This shape is really a direct result of our conversations with the neighborhoods, with the neighborhood constituents who came up. We offered those opportunities for people to come.
And where did people find out about that? Because I wasn't hearing anything about it. I mean, I'm old, of course, my children are gone, long gone. I hear some from my daughter because her kids are at Lincoln School.
Sure.
But where were the old people that are paying taxes too? Where were we supposed to hear about this?
They were, they were there, there were people there.
Really?
Yes.
And where did they find out about that?
Get up.
I mean, there was lots of social media. I know, like, we shared it with, you know, neighbors that we knew were in the neighborhood saying, you know, spread the word. I know the PTAs did stuff.
Those are people with children in the schools.
The neighborhood associations as well.
Right, the neighborhood association. Like, I heard from people, it's not my neighborhood, but I know of people who do not have kids in the school that spread the word through book clubs, and like, we really did work to try and make sure that as many people were aware of it as possible. But I totally understand your frustration, if you didn't feel like you got to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional community comment on the presentation?
So, I have a, I have a question. So, we're going to call, I'm just not understanding. You're going to call the roll?
Yeah.
And we're going to vote? The, the motion says the schematics presented. Just so we've said it out loud, to the extent we can, am I correct? You, you are going to consider the board's comments in spirit. Obviously, you know, we're not voting on yay and nay on particular comments, but the spirit of the comments are implied in us voting yes on, on this. We know that, but we should say it out loud that, yeah, you're, you're going to look at things that we talked about.
Understood and yes.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other comment, we can call the roll.
Mr. Doman?
Yes.
Ms. Brayley?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Banger?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Muffell?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you very much for all the work.
Yeah.
Appreciate everybody here and not here who's put a ton of work into this, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I just wanted to share, I was reached out to by a couple different folks about the Underwood design and had a lot of feedback, and I encouraged them to go talk to Ms. Nettashine, and they ended up calling me back several days later and saying, I was so mad, I was so frustrated, and I felt like all of my, you know, questions were answered and, you know, responded to, and they were just really pleased with the process. And I just want to call that out because we don't oftentimes get like super happy people that call us. And I just felt like the response that she, or the, the questions that she was bringing were not just from her, but also from some teachers, you know, and, and, and I, I was just really excited when she called back and said like, I just want you to know, I was heard, I had my questions answered. I spread all that information to all the people who I was sort of unofficially representing. And I just want to lift that up because I know you guys have been getting an inordinate amount of feedback, and it's really hard to balance what everybody wants and needs. So, thank you for your patience through the process.
Thank you for sharing, that does mean a lot to us.
Yeah, no.
You're welcome.
I was really happy.
Thank you very much, we'll move on.
Okay.
To the Legislative Advocacy Committee's update. Just Banger and Ms. Brayley.
So, our meeting was canceled due to the extreme cold. So, we will be meeting again in a month, but suffice to say, you all saw the update from Senator Koiganga about what's happening with special education funding. But that's something we obviously still would like to see addressed a little bit differently as it doesn't show that much of an actual increase for us, and it will take a decade to get even just the small increase. So, want to figure out a way to work with him and work with other folks in the Assembly to see if we can get a bigger bump in the, the funding that we would get.
Question. So, as I'm all about explicit, when you say a little bit differently, that was a very gentle way to say?
Yes.
It's not, could you?
An additional 10 cents is not acceptable from my perspective when we're still saying we're giving 90 cents on the dollar to other schools. So, if we're going to be equitable as a state, I think we have to say that every special education student is worth the same amount of money, and thus, 10 years to get 10 additional cents does not feel very equitable to me.
Thank you for the strong words.
The other two things I would say is, so the 20th of February is our...
The other two things I would say is, so, the 20th of February is our next Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting, a week from Wednesday, and then the 25th, we are hosting Robin Vining, our newly-elected representative at East High School. So, 2:25, Robin Vining.
Question, please. Are these meetings, they're notice meetings, is that?
They are notice meetings.
And they, they are public meetings that you do not entertain public comment, but people, interested folks can come and observe.
Anyone can come and, and contribute.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, they do most of the work.
So, when you say anyone can come and contribute, then you, the people who?
There's an agenda, it's a working meeting.
And people can participate?
Yep.
With, with, oh, okay, and we, nice to.
That we can't talk about anything that's not on the agenda.
Right, I understand that, but it's not like our meetings here, where, where in-service, we don't entertain comment, you do take comment and actually walk-ins can participate in the dialogue.
Although, I might be a little concerned if 100 people showed to our visit at Tosa East with representatives.
True, true, but there's a practical consideration, of course, but the format allows for participation. Thank you.
Yep, the Legislative Advocacy Committee, we, we strongly encourage and are always looking for more community engagement.
Yeah. And I would just, Emma and Sam, I'd put that out there to you, too, like, if you know students that are really interested in politics, like, this is a great way for them to get their voice heard as well.
If people can just contact the district office if they are interested in.
They'll get put on a list and they'll get those updates about the meetings.
Any additional questions, comments? Are you guys also working on the, like, one pager of?
We didn't, we didn't, yeah, we were with you, but we haven't seen them since.
Oh.
That was, we saw you right before the canceled meeting.
Okay, okay.
Still in process, it's slower than we'd hoped.
Yes.
All right, any community comment on the report? Seeing none, we'll move on to final public comment. Is there any further public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing done, I will take a motion to adjourn into an in-service to discuss district data strategies slash tactics to achieve outcomes, as this is a working session of the board, no public comment will be entertained in this session.
So, move?
Move. Second.
Second of all, Ms. Fraley? Ms. Newman, you hold on?
Mr. Domon?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Banger?
Yep.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Muftal?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.